The special city council meeting for the city of Riverbank is now in session. Today is Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. It is 6:01 PM. Please rise. Oh, wait a minute. Before we do that, I have to do this meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code Section 59453 subdivision Echo of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code 545, 54950 at SEC, the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act, and the recent St. Louis County Health Officers Mandatory Face Covering Order, September 2nd, 2021. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page of the agenda for participation information. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District 2, Rachel Hernandez.
Here.
Council Authority Member District 3, Cal Campbell.
Yes.
Council Authority Member District 4, Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Luis Suriva.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Any council member or staffer has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered as to declare the conflict at this time. Seeing none, we'll go directly into the public hearing. The second public hearing, redistricting process for Riverbank's four council members' district boundaries.
Okay, I'm trying to find the PowerPoint. Sorry. I lost it. Okay, I might need your flash drive.
Uh-oh.
Sorry about that.
Make sure to bring up Riverbank, not me, Antigua. Or any other city.
I thought it was them.
Indeed. Good evening, council mayor. My name is Doug Yocum with National Demographics Corporation. Happy New Year, pleasure to be here. It's a very simple question this evening, and I have a presentation for you. Basically, the districts that you drew several years ago, and our company helped you do that, are still according to--
This meeting is being recorded.
--is still according to census figures adjusted by the state of California. The districts are balanced, as we refer to them, and that means that they are no more than 10% plus or minus away from what the ideal population would be if you drew four districts in the city of Riverbank today. Here we go. I have some figures for you. This is the schedule that we had agreed upon if we were to go through the whole process, and today is January 4th. What we could do, if you make the decision this evening, is cut off this entire part of the schedule right here. We'll go to the next page. This is your adjusted census population, according to the state of California and the United States Census Bureau, 24,933, which would give you four districts, ideally at 6,233 people each. Next slide. These are the laws that the state of California and the federal government require you to follow when you draw districts. And we'll just focus on one this evening. Number one, equal population. The state of California enacted a law, the Fair Maps Act, that says that each district shall be substantially equal in population. We'll go to the next slide and come back to this one if we need to. Here are the populations of your districts as currently drawn. As you can see, none of them are off by more than 287 people, and that district, which is the largest district overpopulated, is 4.6% of ideal. District 2 is the largest population, largest district with an underpopulation of 154 people, and that's 2.47% of an ideal district. You add those two figures together, 2.47 and 4.6, you end up with 7.07, which is well under the 10% threshold for having districts that are considered equal according to the California state and the U.S. federal constitution. You have districts that, many districts, three of them, three out of the four, have majority Latino population, so there's no need for adjustment there. Let's see if there's next slide. These are your current districts. They're not strangely configured. They don't look weird. They're easy to understand. They follow main streets in your town, and that's one of the criteria that the Fair Maps Act says you should follow, use major streets so people can understand where the lines are. So unless you think there are major changes that need to be made in any of these districts, you don't need to. See if there's one more slide. We have all sorts of tools available if you want to continue with the process and pay us to come down here another couple times and provide you with programs and things that your citizens can use to redraw districts that don't need to be redrawn. I don't know if any of you are familiar with days redistricting. It's a national program. It's a program that people have adopted nationally, and a lot of people use it to draw partisan districts, Assembly, Senate, Congress, all over the country to try to have influence on processes, and it can be used for local cities and counties, and we've adapted it for that. This is another tool you could use. It's just a paper map. I think I described it last time I was here. And you can add the Excel program to that so people can add things together without having to do it in their head. Mr. Mayor.
Right now.
Yes, let's go back to the population slide way back here.
And I know we do this only every 10 years. But there's a subdivision going in now, and it's going to shoot the population of District 4 up a bit more if it stays with the line. And that's a concern that I have for keeping them equal because it might be two or three years or four years, but it's going to happen because they're building now.
Redistricting is done based on census numbers provided every 10 years. So when we do the redistricting this year, if we were to do one, we would use the numbers that were given to us by the Census Bureau based on the April 1st, 2020 census. When the next census comes around in 2030, the people you may, you talk about may have moved in by that time, and they will be counted in the next census. But as of now, they don't exist.
You know, there can be a lot more people there because it's going to be more populous, and to me, there's a problem with that, you know, wait a whole 10 years because probably in three or four years.
I'll be answering.
Probably by the next election after this election that will happen in '22. You know, four years down the road in, I would say, '26, you know, I could see a considerable amount more people. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I'm just looking at the balance of things, too.
We can only draw districts--
Could also be 20, uh, by 2007 all over again, where everything freezes.
Yeah.
That's possible.
Speaking to one of the things, so what he's saying is true, but what you're saying is that it doesn't matter from a voting rights act perspective, this census period is a story.
Correct.
But the question is this, there's nothing that precludes the council in four years, two years, or five years from deciding to, hey, this district has grown an awful lot.
We'd like to, oh, thank you. We'd like to take a look at doing a midterm redistricting. Correct.
There's, and in the election code, there is a process and regulations that we have to follow and we have to meet in order to look at our boundaries if we believe they're unbalanced, and we follow that procedure. So should that occur, we start looking at the election code and that process, and what it tells us at that time, how we will reevaluate the boundaries.
Is that section also applicable when you have an annexation?
Yes.
Yes.
So when we annex property, and we did that with the Crossroads West, I recently did that, if you look at the map, it indicates Crossroads West territory, and it got divided between District 3 and District 4. So when that occurs, the county every so often contacts me and says, what has changed? And update your map. And if there's property that, or territory that we have to annex into our boundaries, there are rules in the election code that tell me how to go about doing that.
But that property is already annexed, it's the building after annexation?
Yes, and so if we believe that our population has changed in a certain district, there is a process in the election code that we would follow.
Okay, that's good, I think, yeah. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome. But if we were to go through the process now, we could only use the numbers that have been provided by the statewide database, which is what the law requires all cities and counties in California to use. It's the adjusted census data.
There's a lot of building on the east right now that is not included in it. There's, there may be a Riverwalk, I'm saying it out loud, which, which district would that be in?
Three.
Three, so three would be getting a large portion--
Well, it depends what the boundary is, so.
We could go to the map and have a look if we wanted.
But that hasn't even been annexed yet. Okay?
I just think it's good with what Annabelle stated, that if the worst thing happens, and it's very much out of balance, that we can do something about it if we so need to.
Yes, yes. And they anticipate cities growing, so there has to be another process in between the census time period to be able to include your voters into your municipality.
And Doug, can you speak a little bit, since I know you have dozens, hundreds of clients, and you're a busy man these days? Is it pretty, for cities that redistrict or established districts not that long ago, you know, so for us, whatever, four or five years ago, is it pretty common that because that really isn't all that long of a period of time as it relates to a 10-year census period where things can really change, or even 20 years, that many times you don't have a whole lot of map changes when you have a recently established district?
It depends, because if cities like Ceres established districts in the middle of the decade like this city did, you were using, when you drew those districts, you were using data that was from 2010, 2010 census. So when you drew those districts, or when some of these cities drew those districts, they were probably already out of whack. But there was nothing you could do about that because that's the only database that you're allowed to use. It's the official census and state-adjusted database. Same applies now. If a city decides in 2035 to start to establish districts and draw some, they would be based on the 2000, excuse me, 2021, they would be based on the 2020 census, so they may be out of whack already, or they may not. So then in 2030, that city also would have to take a look to see if they need to redraw, which we're doing here right now.
I have another question, too, and this is to my constituents. Have you heard much from your public about what's going on with this?
Zero.
I'm the lucky one. I got somebody. Maybe Sean's going to have to talk with that person.
And we're having a public hearing right now. People are certainly welcome to comment on this issue.
Jake, are there any questions or comments before I open the public hearing?
I have a question. Sean, you mentioned the east side, so is the east side in here or no?
Yeah, the east side is on, yeah, it's on the map.
Okay. That was it.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. I open the public hearing on item 5.1, redistricting process for Riverbank 4 council members' district boundaries. Do we have any public--
There is no one on Zoom wanting to speak, and I did not receive any written comments on this item.
And I haven't received--
There's a raised hand on Zoom. I didn't see it.
Can we let her in?
The one in room 108.
Hello? I didn't see it. Do you see it?
No, it's not, she's not, well, the number's not there anymore, but I could see her hand. She's not on.
Is there any public comment out there? Is there a phone number for them also to call in?
Yes. That number, if you'd like to call in and you just weren't able to get through on Zoom, is, one moment.
863-7198.
No, no, no. In the yellow.
No, it's 863-7151. 863-7151.
I gave the wrong number. I was seeing no public or hearing no public comment. I close the public hearing. Oh, wait a minute.
Hi, Evelyn.
Finally, stuff has worked.
Evelyn, just give me one second. I'll make sure you get on mic. Okay, go ahead and make your comment. You're on the mic.
Okay. First of all, when you had the last meeting, which was published in the paper under the public notice, you said that we had until February 22nd to make comments and do the maps and all that stuff. Now you're coming out and you're going to do it all tonight, but there hasn't been another public notice published since that one. It says in the paper they're going to publish one on July 5th, but that's tomorrow. So I'm just wondering why they didn't notice us after they told us we had all this time? Why didn't they notice us that they were going to come back and end it right now?
Do you have any public comment on it?
Pardon?
Do you have any input on the four districts that we currently have that appear to be suitable for moving forward with remaining the same?
I have more comments.
Yeah, Evelyn, why don't you, just go ahead and make all of your comments, and then the question you had about the rest of the timeline, we'll have the gentleman answer.
Okay. The criteria that the gentleman had, there were some other criteria there, and one of them had to do with separating neighborhoods. And if you look at the map, because my neighborhood was separated, was cut apart the last time. So if you go the same way, it's going to be separated again. And I have a real issue with that because we are in the downtown historical neighborhood, the historical district. We're also in the downtown Pacific Plant, and yet my neighborhood part was separated and put into, I think it's District 3, Mr. Campbell's district. We're putting a district over there instead. And last time, they wouldn't change it. I think this time, they need to look at, just before you decide to go with population only, you need to look at the other criteria also, because we need to be back to downtown where we are. That's my other comment.
Okay. Evelyn, is that all the comments? Because if so--
Yes.
Are you watching us on TV?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to hang up, and we're going to have him answer those two questions.
Can you bring up the map? I know what she's talking about. Yeah, we'll look at the map here. Let me answer your first question first. This is not the final hearing. If the council decides that they would like to go with the current districts, they still have to go through with the next, with the final two hearings and take public input before they make any final decision on a mapping, on whether or not to adopt the map. Because the law requires that each council, each city that goes through this process have four meetings, and this is the second, so you will have two more after this that are, as I showed on the, on the schedule, are already scheduled. So they will have notices, and you will have open, you will have a public comment period at each of those hearings, and then after the fourth hearing, you'll make the decision to adopt the map. And the decision you're making tonight is whether or not to proceed with the process under that basis, and at that point, you must post your current map on your redistricting website so that everybody can see what you're doing, and then go through your next two hearings and have public comments on that particular map, basically like we're doing right now.
If I could make a comment. Mrs. Halbert also mentioned that, why we didn't mention that in the public hearing notice in the paper. And at the time that that public hearing notice is prepared, it was, I received the information of the possibility of not having to create different maps after the fact. However, the public notice does meet the legal requirement because I'm only, I only need to advise the public that the city council is considering the redistricting matter, and you will take everything into consideration, all public comments, before you make a decision. So we legally met the requirement for the legal notice.
Thank you. And you have two more meetings after this.
Do you want to go in about the map? Doug, if it's okay with you, let me show you--
Sure, because I was not involved last time when we, when you redistricted.
Me, too.
When you districted. We're redistricting now.
Right. So the comment that Ms. Halbert is making in a nutshell is she lives generally right here, and her point that she's made to me many times over the years has been that this area here is sort of considered from a zoning perspective, the downtown historical area, the oldest area in town, downtown. For whatever reason, when this map was originally created, this is First Street. Second Street was created as a socialization. Her point has been for many years-- Her point has been for many years that this area here really should be part of District 1 because it shares this common area, so that it's really a difference between, you know, kind of a zoning area and I guess also a neighborhood, so--
Can you point out to me where we are right now? Where City Hall is?
Yeah, we're right here.
I see, okay.
Okay, so what is the deviation for District 1? Don't go away.
We have to go to that other page.
Yeah, the, that's page.
Okay, District 1 has a, okay, that's 17 people below the threshold. By moving that boundary, you're now going over--
To District 3.
And then what is, what's the yellow portion, is that District 2?
District 3.
District 3, which is already under, is going to be under a lot more than 115, which--
Depending on how many people are in that area where--
That's true.
--he just pointed. It could throw you off, but we don't--
It could.
--we don't know that for sure.
And would it may change the demographics, which we do not want to do. Okay, we'll look at it. Thank you, Evelyn.
And Doug, one other quick question, just because of some other member of the public or even if Evelyn were interested. Let's assume that's a really important consideration for them. There's nothing even at this stage that precludes her or any other citizen from going on and drawing a map as an alternative, right?
Yes, and you could consider that map.
But when we first originally drew that, if you all remember, we had a large portion of the population, mending that be the boundary to add in, I believe, the flavor of demographics as they are today. That was a very active and loud, so-- And they had their reasonings for it, and I believe that was to allow certain, more diversity to the district that you're in, Cal, for potential candidates. I remember those.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I haven't closed the public hearing. Is there any other public comment?
There is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
Saying none, I am going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for comments, considerations, and for procedures. I'll start it off. I believe maps are suitable for right now, and as the city grows out in the Crossroads West and the potential for Riverwalk, this whole dynamics is going to change.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with the mayor. If we have to reassess it in five years, we can do it at that time. I don't see any issues with the maps. They're fairly new, went off the data of 2010, so I'm comfortable with this map.
I'm comfortable with it also.
Okay, we'll still consider any inputs that we've received. We considered what was presented tonight and any other public inputs. Sir, do you have any comments for us?
No, sir, it's just nice to come down here. Everyone's-- No, sir, it's just nice to come down here every once in a while. It's entirely up to you if I come down again. I finished with Manticca, so I will not be in this area again unless you ask me to come.
All right. Seeing that, we move on to public comment. Pursuant to government code, in reference to a special meeting, the public has the opportunity to address the city council only on items appearing on this special meeting agenda. Individual comments are to be no more than three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor, before you do that, just to be clear, the consensus was to use the current map--
Yes, sir.
As the--
Based on considerations in the future by additional comments.
That could change, right.
Could we have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oribi.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, and I did this, the public comment, is there any public comment?
There is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
All right. Seeing that, our next regular council meeting will be held on January 11th at 6:00 p.m. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.